All right, here we go. I'd like to go ahead and call our meeting to order. Thank you for joining us tonight. Today is Monday, February 23rd, 2015. We're going to start with the approval of the agenda. Can someone please read that?
Yeah, I'll move that the agenda of Monday, February 23rd, 2015, Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Second, please.
Second.
Roll call action.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
Director Rosenthal.
Aye.
Director Witt.
Aye.
President Meisterling.
Aye. Notice we're missing three board members tonight. They all had out-of-town responsibilities that they had to take care of, as did Dr. Benson, so Mary Ellen Mosk is sitting in on his behalf. Next, we have time and place for public hearing. I'm going to put all three of our items together. So we have Johnson, Hiawatha, and Hiawatha Window and Door Project and HVAC and Window Replacement. Would anyone like to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none. Laurel, did you receive any written communication?
I received no written communication on any three items.
Okay, thank you. That now closes out our public hearing. Next, I'll turn it over to Mary Ellen for deputy superintendent report.
Thank you, President Meisterling. I'm pleased to introduce students from George Washington High School who are with us this afternoon as representatives of a larger group of students, and they're going to be sharing information about the SPIRIT training that they went -- have participated in this school year. And SPIRIT is an acronym that stands for Student Problem Identification and Resolution of Issues Together. Dr. Ralph Plagman and Dr. Valerie Nyberg, Dr. Plagman, the principal at Washington, and Dr. Valerie Nyberg, the associate principal at Washington High School, will be introducing the program and the students to us. Welcome.
Thank you, and my only job will be to introduce the students. They'll do all the talking, so if you guys want to all come up at this time. Several of them have speaking parts, and several others are here to answer questions if you have questions. And we have one that they will explain, but they were elected as our SPIRIT Advisory Council out of the larger group that met last September over at Bethany Lutheran Church. So I will start with the one freshman with us, and that is Tristan Hayes. If you guys would wave as I say your name, that is Tristan Hayes. Then we have a large group of juniors, Finn Barberi and Milan Hodges. They're all wearing Washington apparel tonight.
We like that.
That wasn't exactly an accident. Cordelia Lewis and Amelia Rodriguez and TJ Vogel are our juniors, and then we have two great senior leaders as well, Courtney Squires and Olivia Taylor. And Cordelia Lewis and TJ Vogel will begin the presentation.
On September 25th of 2014, 63 students from Washington High School went over to the Bethany Lutheran Church to participate in the SPIRIT workshop, which was held by Derek Dean from the regional official -- regional office of the DOJ in Kansas City. These 63 students consisted of 22 Caucasians, 21 African-Americans, 10 Hispanic-Americans, eight Asian-Americans, and two Native Americans.
All of these students worked on our six racially-like homogeneous groups of students. And, oh, sorry. There are facilitators mostly from Dubuque who are extremely helpful, and some were Wash staff members who were also facilitators.
We split into different groups, and if you turn to page three and four, it shows you the groups we split into. Some things we talked about were some strengths of the school and different issues we had with the school, and we discussed those in our groups. And if you turn, after you look through those groups, if you turn to page five and seven, we discuss, we go into different things we discussed about our school and different issues.
And after we discussed these issues, four people were elected as leaders to go together to the big group to discuss what we had thought about problems and to discuss how we would fix those. And those four people from each groups now are in the 22 members of SPIRIT.
Thank you.
For our day two, which was September 26th, we worked in six heterogeneous groups to resolve problems. So at first, we were separated, and then we all came together. And the six problems were a result of actually adult facilitators working late on that first day to summarize the first day's deliberations. They decided that the six problems included all of their concerns and identified on the first day. Each of those six heterogeneous groups worked extremely hard to define and -- to define the concern and generate solutions. Actually, those are summarized on pages eight through 13 in the blue packet. The concluding activity on that Friday afternoon was the reports of the each six groups to the final general session that we all came together in. And then our Group One was our foyer concerns about that and then as well suggested solutions. Our Group Two was inclusion, including like cultural awareness and stereotypes that existed within our school. Group Three was advanced placement courses, getting more people involved in those as well as support for those. Group Four was our security concerns regarding like security in our foyer and around the hallways. Our Group Five came up with communication, as in Canvas, Power School, our announcements throughout the day. And then Group Six was breaking down the walls between student groups, basically just like how people have their own separate cliques and just bringing everybody together so that way we do know everyone around our school. And that's it.
So our report from Derek Dean was received in November. After we held the big event, he made a report for us of all the things that we needed to work on, and he sent them over in November. But with the finals that we had and the winter break, we did not start actually meeting as a SPIRIT council until the new year, and we currently meet every other week. We alternate class periods due to all of us having different schedules. It's hard to meet at one time that accommodates everyone. And all of the members and their grade levels are shown on your yellow sheet that you have. The president is Courtney Squires, and the secretary is myself, Amelia Rodriguez. Thank you.
Yeah, like Amelia said, we meet every other week now since our first-term finals had ended. And so with our three meetings, we devised ourselves into three groups, and we voted as a council of the six larger groups that we decided on at the big conference. We chose the three most important ones to us, and those were the kind of like school inclusion, making sure that new students and just everyone that is a Washington Warrior feels included in the school. And the second group was actually called the Birthday Club Group, which is what we're working on right now. And then our third group that we decided was, had to deal with our advanced placement courses and how to get more students involved in that, especially our minority students. And we coupled that with post-high school planning, whether it be for a college path or if a student wants to go straight into the workforce. So like I said, the Birthday Club is what we're actively doing right now, and we have a bake sale going on right now as a means of fundraising so we can do that. And to break down the Birthday Club, we just want everyone, every Washington Warrior, to feel special on their birthday. So we decided that every Friday starting next trimester, we're going to meet with every student that has a birthday during the week and give them a cupcake and sing them Happy Birthday. Yeah?
Yep, so if you guys have any questions, you can just ask us three.
Thank you very much. I really enjoyed that, and I learned something. Any questions or comments to the group?
I got one. The success of this, it sounds very good. How do you see this transferring over to, say, the other high schools? How difficult would it be to say go to Kennedy and Jeff with the same program? And would you help with that, or how would that work?
I think it would be beneficial to every school, because I mean, every school in Cedar Rapids is some type of diverse. And I mean, Iowa wouldn't be opposed to helping other schools integrating this program into their schools. So I mean, yeah, I'm glad to see what it comes to in the future.
Have we done this before, Dr. Plagman? This is the first time? Yeah.
It's the first time we've done this, and the DOJ does it at various high schools. There are a few other Iowa high schools that have done it. I think it might help to look at the purple, the lavender page. I did a little five-question evaluation at the end, and if you can see just at the bottom of the front page there, I had the 63 participants rated one to five based on value of it, and the average was 4.62. So really, they really got into it. And over half of them picked five. And then second question had to do with, were they glad they participated? And that was 4.75, and almost 80% chose five. So the students really did enjoy it. And then directly to your question, Director Witt, if you look at the third question, would they recommend other schools? 100% of them said yes to that question. So I don't know how available the DOJ is to do this at the time, but it was just a great experience for us, obviously, and we're really glad we had a chance to do it.
Good. Thank you.
So, and any one of the students can answer this. Tell me what you really got out of it personally. What you expected, I guess, and then what you got out of it.
Well, I didn't know really what to expect out of it. I just kind of, you know, wanted to check it out. But I, what I really got out of it was you noticed all the problems with like cultural things, like all the diversity at Wash, and it helped to kind of get to know everybody a little bit better and figure out how to solve the problems at our school.
Any other of you want to address that, too?
Well, I didn't realize a lot of students had the same beliefs. I did know different problems around the school. So it was nice to hear that other people agreed, and after we had a lot of people agree together, we were able to form groups, like we said about the, some of our, we were able to form groups to address these problems. So I was very happy with the outcome of it.
Awesome. Anybody else care to share their feelings? Yeah.
I didn't know what to expect coming into it, but I did, I liked how it went. I like how people got to know different races, how we thought, and how to solve a lot of the problems. And I got to get a better look at people who aren't like me personally, like how I am or who I am. And I think it just brought a great experience. Like a lot of the problems that we already had during SPIRIT have like already, most of them have already been like solved, like most of them are already solved. And as coming together as a group like that and going head-on with these like problems, like I feel like it helps us eradicate them. And it was just a great experience. I think like every school should do it, so thank you.
What a tough, thank you so much. We, I think we're going to all agree with you. I, we had a community conversation on Saturday at Kennedy High School with a panel of people put on by a group that Dr. Carlos Grant organized, and it was somewhat similar in that we're talking about relationships and getting to know each other and how that would make a difference moving forward. And so all of you have experienced that, and you would support that as well. Any other comments, Dr. Plagman?
We just want to thank all these students for being a part of tonight, and Dr. Nyberg for coming, and we want to remind you that it's always a great day to be a Warrior.
Yeah. I would just add that I did have the opportunity to attend both the days during the SPIRIT training, and I was amazed by the ability of the students to have some really crucial conversations, some conversations that were difficult that first day. And I think, I see a lot of head nods, and around cultural differences and breaking those things down into achievable goals. I want to commend you and as representatives of the larger group, and just mention that I've worked with a lot of adult groups that don't do that good of a job with solving problems. So congratulations to you. I would just mention it was, it's kind of, it was touted as a pilot program. When Dr. Benson and I had conversations with Derek Dean from the Department of Justice, we talked about the fact that we would try it out at one of our high schools, and I gave Ralph a call and said, hey, will you guys do this? And he always says yes. So we appreciate the fact that that was done at Washington and that we had such great results. I know it was a lot of work for everyone, including the administration, so thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Alrighty, just a few more things for the superintendent's report with my filling in this evening for Dr. Benson. We continue to collect the input on our, from high school students, employees, and parents, and guardians via our district climate survey. This annual survey provides an opportunity for us to gather feedback on such aspects of education as academic preparation, school operations, school leadership, safety and behavior, and parent engagement. The survey is administered by a private company, independent technology and communications firm called K-12 Insight. All responses that are received are kept confidential and anonymous to the district staff. Anyone who did not receive a link to this annual survey can find that information on our website at www.c-r.k12.iad.us, and the survey will close this Friday, February 27th. Congratulations are in order for our partners at the Cedar Rapids Police Department on their recent recognition. Our team, the team of school resource officers recently received the sixth judicial district's Friend of the Court Award for their service to the community. I'm just going to add that I happened to be at the Law Enforcement and Community Relations Forum this Saturday, and both Mayor Corbett and Cedar Rapids Police Department Chief German, both of them referenced how important that the relationship the schools have with the police department and the collaborative efforts for our schools and community as a very, very positive influence. Okay, moving forward, it is a very exciting time of year for us. We're moving into the preschool and kindergarten registration, and that will be taking place for the 15-16 school year. It'll be held from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Friday, March 6th, right here at the Educational Leadership and Support Center, 250 Edgewood Road Northwest. So last year was the first time that we have had the registration at a central location. Families that maybe have sent children to preschool or kindergarten in the past may not, may think that you still go to the local school for that. What we've done is we've tried to capitalize on the opportunity for our parents and guardians to talk with multiple departments, such as food and nutrition, talking about how to fill out forms perhaps for lunches, transportation, to learn more about busing, health services, to learn more about the immunizations and the physical that need to take place before students can start, special services if students have an IEP, and daycare. So there's a great deal of information, and what we found is that this is the most efficient way for families to garner all that information at one location. If you have any other questions, the details for kindergarten and preschool, signing up, registration are on our district website. In addition, about 1,200 of our third graders from our 21 elementary schools have artwork on display at Co-College as part of the Third Grade Clay Art Show, and it's going to run through Sunday, March 15th, and it's at the Marvin Cohn and Eaton Bukin Galleries of Sinclair Auditorium. The regular gallery hours are four to six daily, and the admission is free. I can speak from experience when I recommend attending the Third Grade Clay Show to see some of the amazing work of our third grade students. I might add that the work of these eight and nine-year-olds certainly shows up my own creations in this area when I've gone to one of the places to make pottery. The district is hosting a STEM festival. We're very excited about this, and it is tomorrow from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., February 24th, at the Cedar Rapids Public Library. STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. Students and their families are invited to learn more about these areas in addition to how arts and humanities fit in to create the acronym STEAM, S-T-E-A-M. Activities will include a robotics scrimmage, laparoscopic equipment from the University of Iowa, coder dojo, and several hands-on activities designed to interest students from preschool through high school. This is the second year for the event, and there is no cost to participate, and registration is not required. Again, this is tomorrow, February 24th, at the Cedar Rapids Public Library. And while we're talking about STEAM, I'm very pleased that we can share a video introducing our new STEAM Magnet School at Johnson Elementary.
What's a Magnet School?
Magnet schools are organized around a theme.
A Magnet School offers something different as a learning choice for parents and students.
We become the Johnson STEAM Academy Magnet School at the start of the 15-16 school year.
What does that mean for us?
We are adopting an innovative approach.
We will focus our learning around the theme of STEAM, and you will see a lot of project-based learning going on.
What is STEAM? Is it this?
Well, not exactly. STEAM is actually an acronym that stands for
Science!
Technology!
Engineering!
Arts!
Mathematics!
Are we doing this in our classes now? How's STEAM going to be different?
Well, yes, all of our classes address these things.
With STEAM, we are changing how our students develop 21st century skills.
We will expand our instruction and provide our students with diverse learning opportunities and new experiences.
The academy will be integrating across all content areas.
We will be infusing STEAM into virtually everything we do.
All aspects of curriculum will be infused with the elements of STEAM.
With STEAM, every child will be exposed to what might become his or her greatest passion.
The focus of STEAM is to foster creativity and innovation.
Our goal is to help our children learn at high levels and develop to their fullest potential.
We believe that amazing things are possible through STEAM's interdisciplinary approach to learning.
We look forward to having all of our current Johnson families join us at the Johnson STEAM Academy, and we are so excited to have new families join us. Learn more about the Johnson STEAM Academy Magnet School on our website or by calling 319-558-2174.
We're moving full steam, Marcus!
Great, great video. I assume that's on our website?
Yes.
Justin, Mark, thank you very much. Marcia, thank you. Okay, is that the end of your report?
That is the end of my report.
Any board reports or comments? Okay, seeing none. This is now communications, delegations, and petitions time. I do have one person wanting to address the board. Larry, you want to come up? State your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Yeah, Lawrence Winklowski, 4234, Morrell Road, Northeast. A few weeks ago, I received an email from Mr. Westercamp in response to an email I sent him. His email stated, "I've read your comments." As part of the communication process, most emails people send deserve a simple acknowledgement like this one. Keith, thank you for doing a good job, and I hope others will learn from your example. Next, on numerous occasions, I have been promised that my phone calls to board members would be returned. I don't want to waste your time or mine, so if anyone doesn't want me to call them, please send me an email to that effect. And if you don't want anyone in the district at all to call you, take your number off the website. Next item, our activities policy is one policy that separates our school district from other school districts. I agree with the changes to the activities policies that clarifies how facility space may limit the number of participants. However, I think the proposed policy should be clearer so that an individual's ability will never be a factor for participation. Next item, in light of the accident, one of our buses had, was in last week, I have to ask why we are not purchasing new buses with safety restraints. Even though safety restraints are not currently required by law, why are we not putting the safety of our children first and start the process? We could have all of our buses equipped in 10 years or so. The district has been proactive about protecting our children from intruders in school. However, we bus our students around the state, and our students are more likely to be injured in a traffic accident. And finally, how many business days are between April 24th or 5th and May 4th? One thing we could all agree upon, it's never 22 days. I have this personal policy of not paying inaccurate bills, and I'm sure you have a similar one. Over two months ago, I was contacted, informed I owe the school district some money for past busing. Since prior invoices were inaccurate and missing credits, I contacted the head of Business Services on December 11th about the issue in order to resolve it. Instead of taking the approach of what do we have to do to resolve this issue, he started an email pissing match on how it was my fault and even implied that I was asking for a credit I had already received and cashed. If you were in business, were a business owner, and a customer owed you $100 and you owed them $50, would you spend, send the $50 to the customer? Our district's approach is to send the $50. Since past history makes me question the accuracy of the invoice, I asked for four pieces of information to make sure my invoice is correct. To date, I have received half this information I requested to resolve the issue. But it gets better. I received an email from the head of Business Services on December 16th, which states, "I stand by my previous communications. The past due billing from 2013 to 14 stands at $256.74." However, just before that, I received communications from accounting that says I owe a lesser amount. So why address this to the school board? The school district has spent more than the $256.74 on this issue in the last two and a half months. Is this a way to, any way to run a business? And then you probably are going to give the person a raise in the next few months. You should rethink that idea. I am not saying I do not owe for past busing, and like all stories, there needs to be a villain. So it is my entire fault. Now, please, have somebody other than the head of Business Services get in touch with me so we can resolve this issue. If I do not have the required information to resolve this issue by the end of the week, I will start billing the school district at a rate of $50 for my time in order to resolve this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is consent agenda. Can I entertain a motion in a second, please?
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion on any items?
Just that there was a revision to the item VA 15403. It appears that we actually received three quotes, or quotes from three companies, and so there's just a new item at our table. I wanted to mention that to clarify that we did receive a quote from three companies because that wasn't initially in the information.
Thank you, Anne. Okay, this is a roll call action due to the personnel report.
Director Rosenthal.
Aye.
Director Witt.
Aye.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
President Meisterling.
Aye. Thank you. Next, Steve Graham, would you like to join us, talk about restructuring our district debt obligations?
Thank you, President Meisterling, Board of Education, Deputy Superintendent Mary Ellen Mosk. We have about 100, we, the Cedar Rapids School District has about $118 million of debt, and the debt is paid for with our silo resources. We have no property taxes that we levy for the retirement of debt. Tim Oswald, who's sitting here, and maybe Tim could make his way up towards the podium here, sent me a communication several weeks ago about the possibility of saving some interest monies over the long term in the silo fund, which is always an interesting concept. So I think I'll stop there with my comments. I'll let Tim talk to you about what this concept is all about and sort of some timelines around it. So, Tim, Tim is our financial consultant with Piper Jaffrey out of Des Moines.
So this is only slightly different than if you or I were to go up to our bank and refinance our home loan, but it's the same basic discussion. You've issued bonds, silo bonds on five different You've issued bonds, silo bonds on five different occasions since 2010. Two of those issues probably are, would not make economic sense to pursue, but the other three might. And the key word is might, in my mind. These, the only difference between you and I going up to the bank and refinancing, when we do that, we pay off one loan with the proceeds of a new loan. So the transaction occurs immediately. In this type of refinancing, the three issues that are targets are, have prepayment dates, two of the three are in 2017 and one of the three is in 2019. So there's a period of time where borrowed monies are placed in an escrow account from now until 2017. They're invested in U.S. Treasury securities and then the escrow pays off the old bonds in 2017. But otherwise, the concept of switching out is very similar. The interest rate on the bonds that were issued from 2010 to 2012 were ranged between a low of four and a high of about five. If you were to sell that same issue today, your lowest interest rate would probably be below one and your highest would be about three and a half. So for perspective, while we were generally happy with the rates we got at the time, rates today are quite a bit lower. And so that's the opportunity. Couple of thoughts that I have. Number one, this is an opportunity, but not a gun at your head. There's a minimum threshold of savings that warrants creating an escrow, incurring all of the costs of the transaction and fees and related efforts. And I wouldn't deviate below a minimum threshold. Number two, this will take a little bit of time. The proposal that we're talking about would be to solicit proposals from area and non-area banks. And there's a process we'll have to go through to get that, proposals back from those banks and evaluate those proposals. And I'm particularly focused on, as Steve mentioned, you have over 100 million of debt. Only some of it might make sense, but you don't just walk into even the largest bank in town and say, "I want to borrow 100 million," and expect to get a proposal within a week. I mean, there's a process that has to happen. So my minimum savings threshold to put my neck out there as for you to consider would be that after transactional fees, for every 10 million that the district refinances, the savings needs to be at least 500,000 on a present value basis. So if you're familiar with present value, the concept that a dollar, a value of a dollar today is worth more or less than a dollar 10 years from now, typically more because of inflation. So on a present value basis, that for every 10 million you borrow, we need to save at least 500,000. I think where interest rates are today, we're higher than that threshold with savings on three of the outstanding issues. And so we'll be working together with Steve and to try and move forward over the next few months. From your action standpoint, you won't make any final decisions to do anything until you know the final savings amount. The refinancing, you're entitled to know what the savings is before you take any actions. You'll have an engagement letter with us and you'll probably have one with your lawyers, et cetera. But beyond that, when I show up to talk to you about action, it will be with the final savings number in hand. And if it doesn't meet the threshold, we will not show up to talk about it or perhaps show up and talk about that we don't want to take any action. So, action items I would anticipate at the quickest would probably be at your April agenda with an update on what proposals we've been able to receive and what combination of refinancing we think makes sense. And then probably at your May meeting for actual action. So I'll stop. Other questions?
Anne?
Say that savings threshold again? The 500,000 on total?
Yeah, so save after fees. So after you pay us, lawyers, anybody else that has a transaction-type cost.
And that includes like the escrow costs and setting that all up and everything?
Correct, all of that. Savings in my mind must be at least 500,000 for every 10 million that is refinanced.
Does that equate to 5%?
It is 5%, yes.
Net present value?
Net present value, right.
All right.
Okay, another question?
And you think that's achievable?
I think we're higher than that today.
Okay.
Great news.
Yeah, but again, what I said, there's no gun in anybody's head. If rates were to rise on us and this, and we were below five, we'll talk about it, but we'll just keep watching until we get back to being above 5%.
Sorry, just to continue the question, why would you not recommend it if the savings was 300,000 per 10 million?
Yeah, that's a fair question. There's no rhyme or, there's no rule in the industry or in, I don't think in your policies. I normally would, am uncomfortable because of the escrow and the nature of the escrow. You get to do an escrow transaction once under the IRS rules. You get to do that once per bond issue. And so it seems to me that if you can only do something once, you need to make sure that it's maybe a little better. Now, if this were prepayable and call, we're just swapping one out for the other, I would probably agree with you that 300 would be an appropriate threshold. But because we're blowing our escrow, I think it needs to be a higher threshold.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Right, because if we do it now, we can't, if there's a sweeter deal later, we couldn't do it.
Right, we'll keep a new, we'll keep a new prepayment option in this new issue, but for a period of time, we would avoid, we would miss out on that other option.
Okay.
Allen?
Thank you. Good news, three of the five, you said. How much money are the three worth? If we, is it like 80 million, 70 million?
Correct. It's 78 and some change million right now.
Okay. And then you mentioned local banks versus non-local banks?
Correct.
We're always looking to buy local. Is there any huge downside of saying that we only went to local banks? Would you see that being a negative for this school district?
I think you have the risk of not being able to get all 80, 70, 60 million done. That's a big number for your local community banks.
Capacity is a problem, okay.
Right, I don't, you know, 10 of this is already held by one of the local banks. I would certainly like to be able to go back and talk to them about, "We'll swap you one for another one." And certainly intend to have that kind of dialogue with that particular bank and others. But you kind of need some outside banks when you're talking about a loan of this size.
Sometimes when they do these projects, I know they'll, banks will partner up with a non-local bank and be the front runner, if you will.
That's correct.
So that's another option is to have them partner up.
And it may be that we come back and say, "Look, you know, we think the best combination is of the 80 million that is prepayable, let's only do 50 right now and here's why." I want to reserve the right to be able to have that kind of dialogue with you.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Thank you, Tim.
Great, thanks a lot.
Appreciate the information. Look forward to talking to you again. Thank you, Steve. Steve, do you want to just remain up there and talk about the 15-16 budget?
Thank you. If we could get our PowerPoint slide presentation up there, Justin. This is a season, you know, the certified budget season where by the 15th of April, we certify the budget for the next year. And we've always had the opportunity to come before the board and talk about budget on two or three occasions prior to the board taking official action on certifying the budget. So as we were mulling over the topic of tonight, we thought maybe what a, what a good opportunity it would be for the board to see a variety of different funding scenarios, being that we don't know yet in Des Moines where we're going to be for fiscal 16. And we want to see what, and SSA is the state supplemental aid level, which is right now in the House at 1 and 1/4% growth for fiscal 16. And the state supplemental aid at, in the Senate is at 4%. Somewhere in between, the two shall meet, but we don't know. So we thought this would be a good opportunity to show you four different scenarios, basically doing that, reflecting that. So, all right. Conceptually, the budget is divided into two different processes here. We're really looking today, my comments are really around the certified budget. It's really about the revenue side of things. The budget process on the expense side of things continues and will continue on beyond the 15th of April. We'll be talking about putting the finishing touches on the budget late in the school year, May, even as late as early June before we wrap it up. And we really have a complete budget plan. But because of the law regarding setting the tax levy rate, we have to have the revenue side of the budget done on or before the 15th of April. So these numbers that you'll be seeing are focused on, really on the revenue side of things. Three key dates tonight, you're just listening to concepts about the budget. It's informational item only, no action is needed. The 9th of March is when we would be taking before the board a published budget. We would be asking the board to set a public hearing on the certified budget and we would schedule that for the 13th of April. And the 13th of April, we would hold that public hearing and then there would be a recommendation to approve the budget for fiscal 16. So three key dates. Some of the highlights in fiscal 16, one, I put the stable levy rate at the top of the list. We've talked about this. We have a PEPAL, a voter-approved PEPAL levy that will increase the overall PEPAL levy by 67 cents. And we have talked about a stable levy rate in fiscal 16 and we are, we will be making some adjustments internally in order to hold on to a $15.48 levy rate, which is fiscal 15, the year that we're in currently. It's the third consecutive year that we've held the line on a $15.48 levy rate. The assessed valuation of 90% for commercial industrial property tax relief, this is now a 90% rather than 95%. Or conversely, it's a, it's going to a 10% discount on the assessed value of commercial industrial property compared to where we were for the current year. So there's a change there and the state will be reimbursing all local governments. It isn't just school districts, it's counties and municipalities as well that will see the state pick up that difference between what we would normally be receiving in taxes from that property sector and how the state gets that money back to us. State supplemental assistance, and we don't know yet what fiscal 16 will bring. You can see what fiscal 14 and fiscal 15 were. And how much of that growth will be paid by the state also is a key decision that the legislature needs to take action on. In 15 and 14, it was 100% of the growth. We'll see what happens with that. So the four different SSA growth rates, state supplemental aid growth rates, start with a 1 and 1/4%. All four of these scenarios show this, basically we have two different assumptions. Here we have the assumption of a 3% increase in employee settlements for fiscal 16 and all of our categorical budgets are balanced in fiscal 16s as well. So pretty simple, pretty straightforward. Now, this is a reserve trend for the general fund. If you look at the blue bars, you'll see a decline. The blue bars represent spending authority that is called the unspent balance, but it's really spending authority reserves. And you can see the downward trend from fiscal 12, 13, 14. We're looking at about 3.6, 3.7 million dollars at the end of the current fiscal year. And with state supplemental aid at 1 and 1/4% growth, we would see our unspent balance declined under $800,000. In order for the unspent balance to be stabilized between fiscal 15 and fiscal 16, we have a 2.9 million dollar cut in the general fund to provide for that stability, the long-term stability of our spending authority. You'll see, if you look at the gold bars, the fund balance of the general fund is moving up very nicely and that's a result largely of the additional cash reserve levy that we have in the general fund. But the cash reserve levy doesn't bring a nickel worth of spending authority. It helps us with the budget, it helps us with the fund balance. Moody's, Standard and Poor's, they like strong fund balances. And you can see we're approaching that 10% fund balance at the end of 16, even with a very low level, 1.25% of SSA. But we are forced to consider budget reductions because of the cap called authority placed upon public schools at Iowa. So, yes?
If we reduce the budget by 2.9 million, then the spending authority stays flat from 15 to 16? Is that what you're showing here?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly. 2.9 is the simple difference between the blue bars in fiscal 15 and fiscal 16.
Okay.
That's where the number comes from. Okay? So everything is the same, except we have a state supplemental aid growth of 2%. So you can see, we have a lower reduction necessary to stabilize authority. And we see that the fund balance tips up just a little bit from the previous slide. It does help a little bit. Go to SSA 3. You see the unspent balance now in fiscal 16? It's almost in balance. This is the tipping point for our school district. A 3% SSA increase, 3% employee settlements, everything is in pretty good state of balance. Because we've done a lot of good work a year ago in planning the fiscal 15 budget, we had significant budget adjustments that we had done. We're just looking for a reasonable growth rate in state supplemental aid for fiscal 16. And then if we go to what is being proposed by the Senate for state supplemental aid growth, a 4%, we'll see an actual increase in spending authority to give us, take a little pressure off and give us some room to do some things that I think we'd like to be able to do as a school system. But because of this difficulty that we have been in from a financial standpoint, it's been, it's been difficult, frankly. So those are the four, the four examples of just what happens when we see these four different rates of growth. So we'll continue monitoring what's going on in the State House and we'll respond accordingly. We will continue to review ongoing our budget options. We look at this and it's, it's going to be something that will be necessary based upon what we may get with state supplemental aid assistance. Board action on the 9th of March to propose that certified budget, to talk about the tax levy rate, to see it, to see how it sort of all works out. Once the levy rate is published, you can't increase that rate. You can drop it, but you can't increase it. So there's a little strategy there. And we'll schedule our public hearing. And on the 13th of April, we'd have the public hearing and we would certify the budget and move on. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Questions?
Questions or comments?
A million dollar question is if we don't know on March 9th what the SSA is, what do we do then?
Well, when we certified our budget in fiscal 14, two years ago, we didn't know until May what our allowable growth rate would be.
What did we do? We just picking, we just moved on or?
We set our levy rate at the maximum with the strategy, which is very similar to today. We can't increase it, but we can decrease it. And so we protected ourselves from that by setting the levy rate high. And that was the year that we increased our cash reserve levy substantially. And this is the reason why our, our fund balance has been improving to the degree it has been. So this isn't the first time we've not known or potentially may not know what state supplemental aid growth will be.
But we had a strategy last time. This time, we don't have that strategy. We're not planning on raising the levy. Last time, we did. So see where my dilemma is? March 9th comes, we don't increase the levy, then what do we do? We're kind of in a box.
We have, I can tell you right now, we're in, we're in a strong position regarding our levy. I feel very confident in saying we'll hold it at 15.48. We have a management fund, which is a tax fund that has a fairly strong substantial fund balance in it. We don't need to continue levying at the rate we've been levying with the management fund. In the short term, in fiscal 16, we can drop the levy rate in the management fund, which pays for property, casualty, workers' comp insurance, unemployment, and early separation benefits. Those things are paid for. We can drop that levy rate pretty much equal to or very similar to the increase in our PEPAL levy rate and make it all a wash. We can do this and there's not a significant difference, there really isn't a significant difference in tax levy rate between 2% and 3%. difference in tax levy rate between two percent and three percent. There's a bit of a difference when you get down to one-and-a-quarter percent, but I don't know as one-and-a-quarter percent is going to be the end result of all this at the end of the day. So I feel pretty comfortable that we're not putting ourselves in a corner. We're going to be, we're going to be okay.
All right. Thanks, Ellen.
So we've shared these scenarios with our local, all of their legislators, actually, all of them. They're very well aware of our position. And when you talk about our district being in somewhat difficult position, about eighty-five percent of the districts across the state of Iowa are in the same position we are in and looking at a budget reduction at one-point-two-five for all those districts. So it's important to continue to lobby, any opportunity you have, and to get parents and your friends to do the same. I know that we're on it weekly, so we're paying attention to it. Good information. I'm glad we can hold the levy rate at the current rate and for three years. I think that's important to our community and our taxpayers. So appreciate the information, Steve. Thank you. Okay, let's talk about another school calendar.
Okay. Let's talk about this.
Is this our third?
This is number three. Yes, it is. Yes, it is. So I'm going to do a little walk backwards and talk about the history of the calendar since it has been quite the topic in the state, across the state and, of course, with us. So if we go back to October of two thousand and fourteen, you might recall that the board approved the modified year calendar for Taylor and along with our general calendar used by all the other schools as we try to get that completed and approved before that November first deadline on a regular basis. That calendar had an August seventeenth start date. And that was submitted to the board, approved by the board. And then what happened is we know that there's some, we didn't change, the law wasn't changed in Des Moines. It basically was indicated that they would be enforcing that deadline of the September, that the start date should include the week of September first. So at our last board meeting, Dr. Benson presented option B. It left the Taylor start date unchanged and it moved the general calendar to an August thirty-first start date to correlate with the existing law. That would be, that would have the week of September first as part of that week that we would start. So tonight, we're bringing option C. And option C leaves Taylor Elementary start date unchanged, but there are a couple of changes to their professional learning and in services. And those were moved so that those dates would correspond with the dates on the other calendar. So the modified calendar and our calendar would both have those dates. The modify, the option C that we're presenting tonight has an August twenty-fourth start date. And the reason that that was changed is because there is some conversations taking place at the state level about a compromise between the week including September first and when can we possibly start after the state fair has ended. So that's the calendar that is being brought before you tonight to talk about. So the first one was an August seventeenth that was approved last October. Then we brought the thirty-first, which is two weeks later, as option B. And now we're going back a week, so we have a, we actually have a seventh, an August seventeenth, an August twenty-fourth, and an August thirty-first. And the one that is brought tonight is the twenty-fourth. Hope that clarifies. Are you confused yet?
No, because I think everything else remained the same.
That's correct.
As far as.
That's important. And I forgot to note that our winter break, vacation, the spring break, and Thanksgiving all remain the same on all three of those calendars, which I know this is very difficult for our patrons in trying to figure out schedules and things for next year, but we thought that was really important to leave all of those breaks the same.
Yeah, yeah.
So was there any discussion about, so we're still doing hours next year, right?
Correct.
We're doing the number of hours.
The board approved a resolution on the hours at the same time we did the calendar last September.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to make sure that that hadn't gotten changed too. So is there any discussion about making any of the days a little longer that there wouldn't be as many? Is that, is that an option that was looked at or not? Because I know initially, we really were trying to get final exams for the first semester to end before the winter break. And with going to the thirty-first, that didn't happen. And I didn't know if, if starting on the twenty-fourth, if there's any discussion about, well, if we added so many minutes a day, what would that look like to get done before the winter break?
We have not engaged in that discussion at this point in time.
Okay.
You did talk with the high school principals, though, about their desire.
Mm-hmm. We talked about, it's my understanding in other districts, sometimes they would do those final exams, those summative examinations prior to the end, prior to the winter break so that students would have the learning fresh and they do it earlier. We talked about doing that as well and we want to engage in a conversation around whether that would be an option or if we're going to look at having those exams at the end of the semester, which would be that January date.
Okay. So that's part of the discussion with the high schools is whether there's some value in having exams before winter break or not?
Yes, we have had that discussion.
And there's not a decision yet?
There has not been a decision on that. We left the end of the semester because if you look at it, there's eighty-nine days in the first, I believe, and eighty-nine days in the second semester. And we thought that was important to keep those dates and keep them somewhat even.
If we took your concept and had finals before winter break started, that would put a twenty-day difference between first semester and second semester. Why we thought it was important to put that on the January fifteenth date rather than a twenty-day difference.
Well, that's why I didn't know if you added fifteen minutes a day, what does that do? But if you haven't, if that's not really on the table, then?
We haven't discussed that yet. It's not saying that we couldn't.
Okay.
Ellen, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just January fifteenth, it says, is the end of the first semester. So does that mean the January nineteenth is the beginning of the second semester?
Yes.
I think for clarity, maybe just add that to your little list there on the side.
Yep.
This is our first year going to semesters. And so we could also put, instead of the start of school, you could be, put the beginning of the first semester again. Kids think, you know, in college, it's always first semester start, first semester end, and so on. And so we could just add that clarity to that January nineteenth date, which is kind of different. Usually you have a little break between semesters to kind of regroup and this will be interesting to see how well the students do.
You have a holiday in between.
Yeah, one day, Monday. Good. Thank you.
So by adopting this calendar, we would potentially, if the legislature doesn't act, it would be that September date, right? So we wouldn't have to redo it again.
We haven't acted on anything officially other than the date, the first one in October, but last.
The other two.
Are just informational at this time until we get more information from the State House. And hopefully on March ninth, we will be able to do a public hearing with the appropriate calendar based on their guidance.
Right.
Okay. Thank you for your work on, again, on the calendar. Next, we're going to turn to Steve and Mary Ellen to talk about our instructional support levy.
Great. I'll go ahead and get started. The instructional support levy is, as we know, it is going to be expiring on June thirtieth of two thousand and sixteen. What we would like to do tonight, we have administrators from several different departments that are going to talk about the breadth and the depth of the instructional support levy. The instructional support levy provides a great deal of the funding for our instructional programs and our resources to help us provide a quality instructional program in our district. So with the end of our current ISL just around the corner, we thought it would be timely to share information with you about how deeply embedded that the instructional support levy and those resources are in on funding multiple areas of our instructional program in the district. And so we have a few people from the Office of Learning Leadership, other departments that will be speaking. And I know Sue Wilber is going to be speaking on behalf of the Office of Human Resources about the next slide, which is our wellness program.
The Human Resources Department uses the instructional support levy to fund a wellness program for the district. Eligible staff members participate in it. You can read through the benefits there. One of the main ones is we see teachers more present in the classroom, which of course leads to better benefit for students. And then my next slide, we have about fifty-eight percent of our eligible employees currently enrolled in it. We've partnered with Virgin Pulse to do this. And although it's going to take a couple of years to see our numerical data, we've already heard from staff that it's provided a lot of positive lifestyle changes in their behavior patterns.
So how come we only have fifty-eight percent participation?
How come we only have fifty-eight percent? It's, they say that's good. Actually, Virgin Pulse says that's good for your first year. There's a lot of, you know, communication and rolling it out. We kicked it off in summer and so July first was the start of it. So of course, you know, we called that a soft launch because teachers aren't back until August, so we kind of re-kicked it off again in August. They're getting emails from Virgin Pulse. I've gotten some feedback from teachers that, you know, they don't recognize that email address, so some of them are just deleting because they get bombarded with emails. I try to go out to buildings to communicate about it. We're trying to talk about other ways to communicate it, but they say that fifty percent is about average for your first year. So Virgin Pulse tells us that fifty-eight percent is actually really good.
Okay.
So I think just communicating it out more.
Okay. And then having people share their experiences with it as well.
Question.
Yeah.
It could be tied, is our enrollment for health insurance at sixty percent? Or is that just a coincidence? Aren't we at sixty percent enrollment?
Sorry, no mic. I think it depends on the employee group. And I know that Jill Servell would be able to speak with this one with the data and give you those precise numbers and maybe we could follow up with that.
Yeah, it was just kind of a coincidence, I thought. Maybe the people that are enrolled in this are the same people that are in our health program.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't think there's a correlation. Actually, I think it's just ironic because we do have people that are not enrolled in our health insurance that are actually on it.
Really?
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
ISL is very important for technology. As you know, with our silo funds, those are restricted funds that can't be used for general operational costs. So staff and telecommunications services and internet services, software, antivirus, all those type of things are.
I don't think your mic's on. Can you start over? No, okay.
Technology's messed up.
Is it on now?
Is it?
Is it on?
Yep.
Okay. So as I was saying, the instructional support levy is critical for our operational needs in the technology area. It does cover a lot of the telecommunications services, the internet access for our buildings. It helps cover our staffing that support the students, the computers, the network. Also, some very critical applications like the finance, payroll, and HR system.
Questions or comments, please feel free to jump in.
I'm going to talk about our continuous improvement budget. It is fully funded by the ISL. And if you think of the term continuous improvement, you may recall that it is our guiding philosophy on our district strategic plan on a page. Continuous improvement just connotes that we are definitely interested in always becoming better. What it, if you broke down that budget, if you were to look at what we spend that money on, we pay for our staff to be provided with professional learning experiences. The experiences are closely tied to our three large district goals of closing the achievement gap, implementing the professional learning community model, and assuring quality instruction in all of our classrooms. Learning experiences that could be provided by this could be at the district level by district teachers, some seminars. It could be by an outside provider that we brought into the district. For example, Wright Tools is a vendor that we have been using for the past few years and we plan to continue using. It could be supporting the cost of our teachers, our peers attending professional learning at the Grantwood Area Education Agency as they provided quite a bit of the new teacher center training for us. And it also is tightly linked to the money that we spend with Solution Tree. Each year for the past five years, we have been sending our staff to the PLC Institute and have found that to be a very good resource for professional learning as well. So that budget covers a lot of different types of professional learning. But again, in a professional learning community, learning is as important for the adult learners as for the students. The next slide has to do with some, it's kind of a mix of some different things that we consider and call them special programs and partnerships. As you know, the district has many partnerships and Junior Achievement would be just one of those partnerships. Junior Achievement is a program and we've worked with Junior Achievement for many, many years to work on implementing twenty-first century world, real-world learning and financial skills. And we, that is in grades three, eight, and twelve. Canvas is our learning management system and it is the link for our students, for our families, and for our staff to communicate through that learner management system and with, through technology. We're doing quite a few things with flipped classrooms. We're working very closely to put more learning experiences from the classroom on there so that students and families aren't just linked to the classroom during the school day, but beyond those school hours as well. And also, Power School is mentioned in this one. Power School is our student information system and it goes from the very broad areas of storing demographic information about our students to as specific as creating our progress reports and transcripts and things like that for students in our district. So, and then postage for school mailings that happens to come out of there. So if school is sending out documents to the families, we can use some of those funds for that. So that was kind of a few different things. Do you have any questions about those? Okay. The counselors, district-wide, we have counselors at all of our buildings in the district. And the staffing for those counselors, we have two different funds that we use to pay for the counselors, ISL being one of those. And how we figure out the staffing ratio for those counselors is we look at the size of the building, how many students are in the building. And then we also look at how many of the at-risk indicators those students have. That tells us information about the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of the students in that, in that school, if indeed there are a lot of at-risk indicators that are coming up for those students. And then building secretary support, we have many secretarial positions in the district. This funds a few of those positions. It certainly does not fund all of those positions. Yes.
Back in the day, a counselor was not only someone who helped you with your schedule, but helped you with issues that you might be having on a personal level. There's a nurse too, but my question is, could the mental health issues that we've had where we don't have the funding that we once had for that in our school buildings, is there an opportunity to use support levy for that? Or is that off the table?
Oh, for, specifically for that and not, certainly our, certainly our counselors are providing social, emotional, and behavioral support to our students. That's part of the work that they do on a daily basis. So in some ways, they do support the well-being of students with their mental health. Could that be used for, to pay for mental health supports? It could be, probably. I would think it could be spent in that manner. Unfortunately, the instructional support levy is something that we don't have extra money to look at something like that for any of our resources.
But it builds a case of why we would need to renew this too. Because we have all these needs. It's like, okay, now we're going to not renew this and miss out on that and this.
Absolutely. You know, I'd be remiss in not saying that every year, when we have looked at what reductions are necessary in our district because of the state supplemental aid, which is unfortunate that we've had to do that for several years, we have been very, very focused on keeping programs intact. That has been a priority. However, we've made several reductions over those years. The counseling support has remained stable, but we have lost the support of, the funding for mental health support. So I don't know if that answers the question.
Well, this could be a backup, I guess. If we, if push came to shove, this could be used then for that, we'd lose out on some of things it's currently funding, but at least it's another opportunity.
It is. It is something that could be considered.
But you're right, you would have to adjust all of these other categories that they've been describing to account for that.
But I just want to make sure it's possible as a backup plan.
I'm going to talk a little bit about the curriculum materials and support that the ISL funds. And I would echo what everybody else has said about the critical importance of that fund to the programming that we provide. We use that fund to purchase. We use that fund to purchase pretty much all of our instructional materials. So for example, we're purchasing new middle school math materials for next year. A hundred percent of that purchase comes from ISL. We use ISL to fund a yearly musical instrument purchase. And really, the only way that our schools can get some of those larger musical instruments is through that ISL funding because fees and such, they could not save enough money to purchase a large instrument without that ISL funding. It pays for musical repairs. So when students rent instruments from us, we pay for the repair of those instruments through that. It pays for content area field trips. So when our kids go to Usher's Ferry or they go to any of those that are connected to our curriculum, that funding comes from ISL. And without that funding, we, it would be detriment, very detrimental to our students and the programs that we provide for them.
And in addition to what Carla just shared, I'm going to share a little bit about elementary reading, which is a big piece of the funding that we do at the elementary level. And that includes materials, that includes training for our teachers, that includes things to get, make sure that we are moving forward with some of the newest strategies and things like that. Carla talked about music materials. Those could be textbooks, those could be music selections. Also, we have a lot with outside agencies. We have a lot of agreements in the area of music. And part of that is their curriculum and, and in addition to what happens in the classroom. And some of it is outside agreements where they come in and they provide things to us as well as we go out and we get to see some interesting experiences for our students in the area of the arts. The next area would be in also reading assistance. One of the pieces that we have at the elementary level would be our prep program, our primary reading in elementary program, primary reading elementary program is what prep stands for, sorry. And that's a piece of it, as well as all of our paras. We have paras in every single kindergarten room. Some of those rooms have a three-hour or four-hour, kind of depends on the building and, and how we've supported that through the ISL funds. We also have some of our elementary teachers that are funded out of this. So again, this is a very important piece of the work that we do in elementary and all of our areas.
This fund is eight million dollars.
Yes.
And does all this stuff.
All of this. And all of us have a piece of it. And then the last one that.
It's magical.
It is magical. The last one that I want to talk about is our Spanish support or our FLESS program. And every year, it, we add two additional elementary Spanish teachers or FLESS teachers. And at the end of next year, we will be K-five elementary Spanish. So that means every grade level will have Spanish. And so we've been able to do that by adding two teachers a year. And again, a very strong program that a lot of our community people look at as a plus in our district.
The ISL also allows us to pursue innovative pilots so that we can experience the future as it exists in the present and help us inform our way forward.
Data system support, we have a lot of electronic data systems. Now, we've moved away from the paper and the pencil long ago. And a lot of off-the-shelf data systems that we find the best of breeds come with operating license. So we have this ISL resource, which is vital to pay for our operating fees for the things that we do. Timekeeping, we have our electronic timekeeping system, purchasing system. We just deployed a fixed asset management system as a result of audit requirements and, and so on and so on. So, and we will continue to grow in what we do electronically as we move forward into the future. The second slide there, for, for my purposes at least, is the school bu, building budget. We have a four-million-dollar school building budget for our, all of our schools. It's based upon a per pupil allocation, for the most part, with some exceptions made to that. But this is, these are really important resources for the building principal to do things at the, at the building level, discretionary instructional dollars to spend. Some things as simple as just copy paper and running copy machines at the building level. The ISL represents fifteen percent of the overall four-million-dollar building budget for all of our school buildings. So it's a very important part of that. I think something else to say too that needs to be with clarity, I guess, is the ISL is a unique categorical program. It is a very broad program. We can spend ISL money for any general fund purpose. It's the broadest definition under the law as opposed to something that's very unique and specific, like a title one or dropout prevention. Second thing, it's important to know is that the ISL, schools are not required to account for ISL spending within the general fund. Many schools dump the money into the general fund and it's used for general fund purposes. We have always, from the very beginning, accounted for everything we do with the ISL so we can come before you and say, this is specifically what we do with our ISL. And even though we have legal purposes that are very broad, the conversation about what you can do for.
Mental health.
Mental health is certainly a legal use of the ISL. The real conflict lies in what do we give up in order to provide the room for that within the ISL program? So next steps, March the ninth, we would bring back to you a consideration of a resolution to participate, sort of like what we're doing with our budget. We need to schedule a public hearing, set a public hearing, talk about this in a public hearing. And then on the thirteenth of April, we would hold that public hearing. And presumably, we would be taking action following that public hearing on the same night to renew a five-year board-approved ISL at the full ten percent of the district cost per pupil. That's the maximum by law. That's the level of funding that we currently are at right now with a blend of local property tax, SRTAX, and we used to call the, the third blend, state aid. But the state aid is gone completely. The state removed that half a million dollar component for us several years ago. And we're, we're always hopeful that the state will come back and provide for their share of the ISL funding. But at any rate, these are, these are just the, the high points of, of the ISL.
I'm sorry, Steve, remind me, what was the state, what was the state's contribution a few years ago?
For our school district, the state's contribution is a half a million dollars annually. That's what we lose in spending authority and resources when we don't have the state providing for its share.
Thank you. Putting that on my lobby list. Comments or questions? I appreciate the level of detail that you provide regarding ISL funds. You don't have to do it, as you stated before, but it demonstrates to us that, that you, that you're doing that. And it also tells us all the many things, like you said, Ellen, you're doing all those things with eight million dollars. So thank you for breaking that down and, and keeping track of those dollars. Other comments?
I have a question about, it's board-approved, but by petition, it could go to a vote. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Reverse referendum, I think that's the.
Reverse.
Yep.
Which, you know, I, this is why we're explaining it, and it's very much needed. But I think it's important that people know there is an option that we don't see.
And this is, this is delineated by law in the board resolution documents. So this, this is a concept that will come before you in writing with the resolution by law.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks for the reminder, Keith. Okay, anything else before the board tonight? Take your calendars home. We stay on the journey. Thank you.